I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the government.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Hines.
Yea.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yea.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
We're all here this evening. Go ahead and move on to public participation this evening. This is, uh, the first item is public comments. If there's a member of the public who wishes to address the board, I don't think we have anybody this evening. Oh. Rocky? Do you wish to address? Okay. He looked like he was getting ready to get up. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item B, which is the presentation of the River Run Proceeds to the VFW Post 7452. With that, I'll ask Pete Wallers to first presentation.
Okay, thank. This. I lost my pen. Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna run a scrolling slideshow for, uh, of the event, but I wanna go over a few things. Uh, I wanna recap the race and, uh, thank our volunteers and, and some of our other support agencies. So, let's just start with a summary of the race. We had our biggest turnout, uh, yet. It's our 11th race. We had 259 runners, 13 age categories. We run both a five and a 10K race, so, uh, that amounts to quite a few, uh, different trophies that we issue. We had 30 sponsors, which I'm really proud of, and I'll go through those in just a minute. Forty-one volunteers. We had seven, what we call our day-of vendors that made, uh, were at the race. And probably most importantly, we raised $7,000 for the VFW. And we're gonna do the check presentation at the end of the, um, the program here. So, uh, I just wanna talk about, I just wanna mention a few of the, the volunteers to start. Angie Smith from EEI is the race director, and she did a great job of organizing the race and getting things going. And then we had quite a few other folks from EEI there. Uh, trustee Marisak was, uh, at, volunteered. Uh, trustee Bond was our photographer, did a great job of, uh, tracking the entire, uh, event. Um, of course, the mayor was there. Uh, one of the interns from the village, Ryan. Uh, Jeff Soffel, uh, was at the race, and you may notice on some of the photos, Jeff actually led out the runners on, on his bike and kept them going in the right direction. Uh, Justin, uh, was there along with his son and daughter, Emily and Matt. We appreciate their, them being there. Um, and we had, uh, from the Aurora Nursing, uh, School, we had 27 nurses there to help support us. So, that was really great to have that many volunteers. It was a great thing. On our sponsors, I have the sponsor board out, so I, if you get a chance, take a look at it, but we had, uh, four different categories for our sponsors. The, uh, the gold sponsors were Ozingle, Ozingle, Illinois, Dick Pond Athletics, Engineering Enterprises, and Village of Montgomery. And, um, then we went to our silver sponsors, which, uh, we had quite a few. P-Zone Associates, Boulder Hill Dental, Caterpillar, Lacon Company, Rush Copley Medical Center, Physicians Immediate Care, Walmart, VVF Illinois Services, High Cutter, and Ryland Homes. And then our, um, regular sponsors, we had Scott I-Care, All Steel Credit Union, Old Second National Bank, Rosati's of Montgomery Pizza Pub, Wolfen Company, Fox Valley Building Trades, Advance America, and Kaufman Truck Sales. And then our last category is what we call the Friends of the River Run, and those are folks that donated gift certificates and other things that we used at the race, which were very helpful. We had the Naperville Running Company, Fox Valley Park District, Friends of the River Run, uh, Buena Beef, uh, Sports Authority, Sam's Club, Panera Bread of Oswego, United Facilities, and Dick's Sporting Goods. So, all in all, we had just a great list of sponsors, a lot of community support, and that was quite appreciated. And then, uh, as you all know, when you put on any kind of a race, there's a lot of things going on, uh, all the time, and we need a lot of, uh, support from the other agencies. So, I'd like to also thank, uh, the Police Department, Chief Dan Myers, Sergeant Pelco, who, uh, was our organizer, and then the day-of supervision came from Sergeant Sullivan, Officer Kern, and, uh, Officer McCollazak. Now, uh, anybody that was at the run, thank you. That knows that I'm famous for butchering names when we do the awards, so that's, when I saw that name, I thought, "That's just perfect." Anyway, so, if, uh, Dan, if you could come up, I have a plaque for, or a thank you for the Police Department I'd like to leave with you. And if you could pass that on to Greg and Sergeant Pelco, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And then from Public Works, um, I'd ask Director Povens to come up. Supervisor Byer helped organize the guys, and then the day-of volunteers were, or vol, uh, workers were Don Schomer and Corey Kennedy, and they did a great job for us, so, appreciate that. And we have a plaque for Public Works that I'd like to pass on to you. Thank you. Appreciate that. And then I have one for Montgomery Countryside Fire Department as well. Uh, they've always been, uh, at the race to provide paramedic support, and we really appreciate that. And they usually have, uh, their snorkel unit there, but they had a fire call, uh, during the race, so they were unable to be there for the whole race. But, the main thing there is that they give us the support for the paramedic, which is huge. So, that was great. And then, of course, we have, uh, a lot of support from the village itself, the administrative, uh, group here, and all the village hall staff. So, I have one, uh, for the, uh, the village hall to, as a, so Matt, maybe you could come up, or Jeff?
Yeah. You go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, and then I just also like to say that, um, we, um, uh, like to thank Fox Valley Park District and Swigelland Park District. We do run the race, uh, partially in Montgomery, but then we also run it on the, the river trail that runs both in the Fox Valley Park District area and the, um, uh, Swigelland Park District. And we have a great race. People really like the, uh, the route that we run, so it's pretty cool. So, uh, with that, the next most important thing is to ask, uh, John Benkey and, uh, Bill Reagan to come up from the VFW. Um, I don't know if we can say enough about these guys and, uh, how much I have respect for them. So, this year, we were particularly happy to be able to, um, to give, uh, a donation to the VFW here in Montgomery. We appreciate that, appreciate them. So, Mayor, if you would come up, we have the big check, maybe we can get a picture of that and with you, with the guys, and, uh, we'll hand over the little check as well, which is more important than the big check, so. I'm gonna give that to the quartermaster, so nothing happens to it. So, Matt, the big check is right, is right in front, so if you guys would go out in the middle, and we'll get a, get a shot of you guys. Okay, and I've got just one more thing for VFW. We also made a plaque for you all to just to have at VFW, so that, um, you can have something to remember the race by, so, thanks a lot.
Nervous now? You're not on the air. I'd like to thank the village of Montgomery, the board, Pete, working with him on the race, and it was a nasty day that day. Remember that, Pete?
Yes.
Probably one of the worst ones we had, if I can recall. But, uh, I'd accept this check on behalf of Montgomery VFW 7452 veterans and all veterans associated around, uh, America. Now, on the eve of, uh, tomorrow, being our Veterans Day ceremony, up at the cemetery at Riverside here, we do have a ceremony at 11 o'clock. You're invited to it, and after that, you are invited back to the post for complimentary, um, turtle soup, if you like turtle soup. But, uh, a few words about Veterans Day, it won't take long, Pete. But, uh, Veterans Day originally was called Armistice Day. I don't know how many of you know that, but it was. And that's in honor of the, uh, end of World War I in 1918, they signed the truce. And it was on the 11th day, 11th hour, 11th, whatever. And then the actual peace treaty was not signed until June of 1919. And then, it went on honoring, all veterans were honored on Armistice Day. But along come World War II and Korea, and they decided at that time, the veteran organizations decided that, uh, it should be renamed in honor of all the veterans. So, they renamed it 1954 to Veterans Day, and it's been Veterans Day since 1954. And one time back, and I don't have the exact date, but we'll say like in 71, 80, somewhere like that, the government wanted to make, not the government, but people wanted to make Veterans Day on a Monday, so everybody could have a three-day weekend like they have. Well, the veterans group got together and they all decided that wasn't good, so it stayed on November 11th. And I thank you very much.
I wanted to say thank you. Boy, this shocked me. I'm gonna tell you what happens with this money. VFW is veterans helping veterans. You've just put some smiles on some kid's face for Christmas, 'cause this is where this money's gonna go for families in need in this town. And thank you.
I've just got a few last comments that I'd like to make. For those of you who are at the race, you may recall, we had some confusion on some of the, um, trophies, and we had to do some corrections, but there was one, uh, event that we, um, I failed to announce at the, uh, at the race, and I thought it would be appropriate to do it tonight. We had a new category this year, and that was mayors 30, 30 to 40 years old. And, uh, I'm proud to say that the mayor of Montgomery was the winner of that category, so we have his, uh, trophy here, first-place trophy.
Good job, Matt.
Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm sure I won't win it again next year, some faster mayor will now join. It's an elite field, for sure. Uh, just two other things. Uh, next year's race is gonna be October 3rd, uh, 2015, so mark your calendars now. And the last thing I'd like to do is, uh, ask everyone to join me and stand up and give an ovation to the veterans that are here tonight. I think there's a, probably, you know, we can't say enough, uh, that they've done for us, and I think it's just, uh, something that we can do tonight. So, if you guys would join me, I appreciate it.
I'd like to say I've had their turtle soup, and it's worth the trip, so if you're inclined to give it a try, come visit them.
All right, we'll move on to something just as exciting, the 2014 Audit Presentation.
Where's my little buddy? Where's, uh, my little friend? He's still with him, yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, on behalf of Sickich, I'd like to thank the President and the members of the board for inviting us here to present some brief comments on the report resulting from the audit of the village for year ended April 30th, 2014. Um, as a result of that audit, the comprehensive annual financial report was issued, um, and I have prepared a few comments for you on that document. Uh, the document consists of three sections, the introductory, financial, and statistical section. Within the introductory section on Roman numeral three, uh, is an award that the village received, um, for its comprehensive annual financial report for its year ended April 30th, 2013, from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and what that award is, uh, recognizes you in an elite group. Uh, this is the highest level of financial reporting within the local government industry, and this is the 11th consecutive year, um, that the village received this award. So, I commend you all for your leadership and continuing to participate in this program. Um, the village then, um, will also be applying for this, um, award with its 2014 CAFER. In the financial section, um, that second section of the CAFER, the first page, um, is on Sickich's letterhead. This is where we've given an opinion on the financial statements. In order for us to give an opinion on the financial statements, we follow two sets of standards. One are the auditing standards that are issued by the American Institute for Certified Public Accountants, which tell us the type of procedures that we need to, to perform when we're, uh, doing our audit. The second set of standards is the financial reporting standards issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. GASB tells us what this document needs to look like, what the financial statements should look like, and what the notes to the financial statements should look like as well. Once we follow those two sets of standards, we can then issue an opinion on the financial statements, and we're pleased to present unmodified opinion. And what that means is that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. The next document within the financial section is the Management's Discussion Analysis. This is a document required by GASB. It's written by the village. It's the executive summary. So, while the CAFER is a lengthy document, this would be the document that I would, that I would focus on first. Um, and this is where you're able to give and describe some of the whys to your financial statements. The numbers themselves present the whats. Um, and I, and I'd say that the, the biggest highlight within the Management's Discussion Analysis, there's the discussion about the, the general fund, um, results, and the general fund, uh, fund balance remains stable for the fiscal year, um, and the fund balance represented about 4.3 months of expenditures, so essentially, those were your reserves going into the fiscal year that you're operating in now. Uh, in conclusion, we received all the information that we needed to complete our audit on a timely basis, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, that you might have this evening.
Who's got the first question? Any questions? All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. And then we'll move on to a phantom, item D, under public participation this evening, and I'll turn it over to our attorney, Steve Anderson.
Thank you. I asked permission to add something to the, the agenda, which is the opportunity to introduce to the board our new associate at our law firm, that's Laura Julian, sitting out in the audi, or in the, the staff tables. Uh, Laura comes to us, uh, with a background in local government law, specifically with the Chicago Public School system. She's been a hearing officer there, so she's got lots and lots of experience in the human resources, labor, and employment law, but she's going to expand that, uh, through her work with us, uh, uh, over the intervening years, hopefully many. Um, uh, as I believe all of you are aware, I'm undertaking a new role, and that role will take me away from the village from time to time, uh, and so Laura will not be my replacement. You will continue to have the same team approach that we've always, uh, you know, approached everything with, but what she will be is my assistant, and will be that continuity of knowledge, so that, uh, as issues develop, if I'm not literally here, she will be available, and then Pete Wilson, Gary Mickey, my other partners, will always be the supervisory personnel. So, we hope to provide you actually with more service than you're getting now, in a two-for-one capacity. In other words, tonight, you see that, uh, you have two attorneys, but you're only being charged for one. So, uh, we're happy to have her on board, and we hope that you'll come to enjoy, uh, her service as well as our, the rest of us.
Jeff, wanna know which attorney are we being charged for?
I'm being charged for Laura Holden.
Same price.
I appreciate the update. I was afraid when I saw another attorney here, I forgot about the email I had read. I thought we were being sued, so, I'm, that's very good.
Welcome, Board, Laura. Appreciate it, and look forward to working with you. Move on to the consent agenda this evening. I'll read the six items and entertain a motion for approval. Uh, executive session minutes of September 22nd, minutes of the village board meeting of October 13th, minutes of the village board meeting of October 27th, the executive session minutes of October 27th, the building report from October 2014, and the accounts payable through November 6th, 2014. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines.
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yea.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you. Under items for separate action, item A, we have ordinance 1635, which is amending the Village of Montgomery Village Code, Chapter 3, Section 3 through 9, Two Play Restaurant. This is the first reading, and if you recall, we tabled this from our October 27th village board meeting. With that, who wants to take this?
I was gonna say, based on the conversation we have later in the agenda, staff would request that we table this again.
Okay. Is there any, anyone opposed to tabling that?
Yeah. Second. I'll make, I'll make a motion to table it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Hines.
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yea.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, uh, waiver of bid and award a contract extension for custodial services to Duquesne Contract Services of Batavia in the amount of $44,412. With that, I'll ask Director Povens for a summary on this one.
Thank you, President Brawley. Uh, tonight, I'm asking the board to consider a waiver of bid and extension of our current contract for building custodial services with Duquesne, uh, Contract Services out of Batavia. Uh, last year, we issued a request for proposals and took bids and awarded to Duquesne. Uh, in my opinion, they've done a, a very good job, good to very good job. Uh, they've offered to continue the contract for an additional 12 months at no price increase. So, uh, good job, no price increase. I'm recommending that we extend the contract for one year. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions?
We didn't go out for bids for this, this is the only one.
I didn't go out for bids, trustee. I'm proposing an extension of the contract, if this were, uh...
Thank, yep, thank you.
We bid it out last year.
It was bid out last year, though, yes.
My only comment would be, um, we didn't see, I don't have the contract in front of me from last time. I know that there's nothing changing, other than the date.
Right.
So, it's pretty clear, maybe if you could include the contract next time, just so we can see. I was concerned about the price, if it was increasing at all, and I know you said that it's not, so.
Right, and I'd be happy to, I brought a copy of the contract, or the RFP, actually. It's not the signed contract, but I'd be happy to share it with anybody, or I can email it to people.
I'm, I'm fine if we haven't had any...
Sometimes we don't do that, just because of the volume of paper, but...
Mm-hmm. Can you email it? Can I email it to me?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll either email it or put a copy in everyone's mailbox.
Thank you.
Email it, you can delete it if you don't care for it.
Hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yea.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yea.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you. Item C this evening, Resolution 2014-017, approving the use of MFT funds for the Mill Street Bridge Assessment. And with that, I'll ask Director Povens for a summary on this one.
This one's pretty straightforward. It's more of a bookkeeping item with IDOT. Uh, back in July, uh, we presented, and you approved an engineering agreement, uh, agreement with EEI to do, uh, preliminary engineering and design on the Mill Street Bridge repair. Uh, we'll do that during the upcoming year. Uh, we're, our intent was to use motor fuel tax monies to do that. They were budgeted, and we do have them available. Uh, this document, the resolution, is required by IDOT to show them that our board has authorized the use of those funds for this work. So, you may recognize this document, we've used it on every MFT dollar we spend, has to have one of these that matches it. So, pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to take any questions.
If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yea.
And that carries 6-0. Thanks, Mike. Item D, uh, US Route 30 Phase 1 Study, the preferred cross-section. With that, I'll ask Engineer Wallace for his summary on this.
This is a follow-up and a continuation of the discussion we had from the last meeting, uh, regarding the cross-section that IDOT is proposing from, uh, basically Albright Road or Route 31 interchange to Route 47. And, uh, we went through a number of details, but there were several questions that were asked by, uh, trustee Spurling and trustee Bond relative to some refinement of the section. We went back to the, uh, IDOT's consultant and posed those questions, and they did respond, uh, and there's some other interesting additions that they made, which I wanna comment on, but just to, to refresh, um, and if I missed anything, please let me know, I can follow up on anything else, but what I had recorded was that, uh, there was a concern relative to the reduction of the five-feet-to-three-foot separation of the, of the sidewalk from the back curb. Uh, the second issue was, is there any decline in safety from reducing a 10-foot shoulder to an eight-foot shoulder? And then trustee Bond, I believe, asked, could we move the, physically move the sidewalk into another location if we had easements? So, the first question, relative to the, um, location of the five-foot versus three-foot, in the opinion of IDOT's consultant, it really has no impact because of the distance, uh, that there is from the traveled lane to wherever the sidewalk is. And what they're saying is if, if they would go to, um, other sections, they would have less separation than what was proposed. So, I don't think the five-foot, three-foot is significant in terms of what IDOT believes, so I think that's consistent with what we, maybe I'd said at the last meeting. With respect to the shoulder, uh, reduction, they again say that the calculations, um, from the Highway Safety Manual don't indicate any decline in safety, uh, between the 10 and the eight. However, if you go below eight, then there's an increase, decrease in crash. So, I think that, again, there's no indication that there's a, uh, a safety issue there. The last issue, is it possible to relocate the path? Um, I believe it is possible, but we'll have to have further discussions with IDOT on that. Uh, it's somewhat complicated in that, um, some of the properties along the route, we control, some of them we don't. For instance, there's park district property, there are other things. Uh, the good news, and what we found out, was that really what they're interested in, or what they're most, uh, asking for is concurrence on what they call the preferred section from back curb to back curb. So, we really, the, really, the only item that we have to, I think, uh, agree to is the eight-foot shoulder versus the 10-foot, uh, 'cause they've already, um, said that the 22-foot median would be acceptable to them. Um, we can take up the question of the sidewalk location at a later time, and one of the things that may influence that discussion is if there's going to be sound walls, or where those sound walls might go. But, by, uh, by, from the village giving them concurrence on the, um, the section, they can then proceed to those other elements, and then we can come back and have further discussion on the sidewalk location. So, this evening, staff would ask that if, if you agree that you would concur with the section that, uh, IDOT has, uh, put forward, which would be the one that was in the packet, uh, with the eight-foot shoulder. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then, uh, go from there.
I, I have a question. Um, am I hearing correctly and, and reading correctly where, um, item number three, if it's possible to locate, locate either the path or sidewalk off of the state right-of-way, that we may essentially be able to have the state do our bike path, per se?
Well, here's the thing. If it's built in the state right-of-way, the shared, they call them a shared-use path, would be constructed as part of the project. When you start moving off, uh, state right-of-way, the funding isn't, is crystal clear, and that would be one of the discussions that we'd have to have with, with IDOT, as to how it would be funded if we moved it off state right-of-way.
Okay.
But, you know...
But it's a possibility.
Possibility, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Kind of shocked with that response. I was hoping, I was thinking that it was gonna be, no.
I have to admit, I was surprised as well, but I was, it was encouraging, so I think...
Certainly.
You know, we look into it and see where it takes us.
Yeah, certainly. And then, I was thinking down the road, if this is the, I guess, decided-upon location for that bike path, one thing that we might be able to do proactively is secure those And then, I was thinking down the road, if this is the, I guess, decided upon location for that bike path, one thing that we might be able to do proactively is secure those easements now, because the road's not gonna be constructed for some time.
Right, we have some time.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any questions on the cross-section? We could pull it up on the big screen if anybody wants to see it. If there are none, we'll entertain a motion, I can see everybody.
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll please.
I was going to make a comment.
Oh, are there any?
That's okay.
Are there any comments before we vote? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, thank you for going, taking those items back and getting clarification for us. That's all.
Call the roll please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. Moving on, items for discussion, the 2014 tax levy. And, you wanna talk taxes, Justin?
Sure. Thank you, Village President Brawley. In front of the board tonight is an announcement of the tax levy. We are required to announce the tax levy in advance of the passage of the levy ordinance. We'll have the public hearing on the tax levy at the November 24th meeting, and then we will put in front of the board on December 8th, the approval of the tax levy. The tax levy that is being announced tonight is $2,202,846. It is approximately $100,000 above the 2013 extension of roughly $2.1 million. If there are any questions, I will take them at this time. There are supporting documents behind the board report that show the calculation.
I'm not certain, but I'm pretty sure you're gonna have some questions.
I've, I've got a couple of questions. This is what we voted not to increase last year, correct? And I have a difficult time with this, simply because we just passed a referendum where we asked the voters to improve, approve of the sales tax increase, at which point, we said, okay, if you approve, approve the sales tax increase, we'll give you a property tax rebate. And now, the next meeting after that referendum's passed, we're saying, hey, let's look at raising property taxes. I think that's the definition of hypocrisy. I understand staff is doing, you're, you're doing everything you can to try and get every penny for the village. And I understand that, and I respect that, but I, that, that's something that this, I can't support. So, those are my comments.
This is for discussion tonight, if we wanted to adjust the levy amount, we, we can do that up until we vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any other comments?
I would've made the same comment. That's all.
This is for commercial and residential, correct?
That is correct.
So the 1% is like, to a house, $10?
The increase amounts to approximately $14 a year for the average house in Montgomery.
And probably more for a business, because of the...
So a third of what we just said, we'll give you back? We're now saying, next meeting after the referendum passes, hey, give us this.
Any other comments? Nothing on that end? All right. I'm sure we'll have more discussion on this next time.
But I do appreciate that you are trying to get every penny possible.
All right, move on to the snow removal and ice control plan for 2014, 2015, literally a day or two ahead of ice.
At least two.
Yeah.
At least two, they're getting hit pretty hard up north, though. So, well, thank you. Tonight, I'm here to give you a summary of the updates, a summary of the 2014-15 snow plan. So, we'll just jump right into it. Again, we've developed a mission for our snow removal, and that is four basic points. Number one, provide safe and accessible passage on village streets from emergency and non-emergency. Pretty straightforward, that's our top priority, safe passage for emergency, non-emergency use. Provide street access to public buildings throughout the season. Minimize the time periods when roadway systems have reduced or no accessibility. We're not guaranteeing, we can't guarantee that they'll always be that way. Back in 2011, we had a pretty good storm, and we had a few streets that were inaccessible. But our goal is to minimize those time periods. And then finally, return the system to full accessibility with an acceptable planned response times. That's really the overarching goal of what we're trying to do with this plan. Some of the goals, emergency equipment accessibility, the first priority is to maintain accessibility to all streets in the village for emergency vehicles. And I promise, I won't read every one of these slides all the way through, but that's an important point. Again, we need to make sure that police, fire, other emergency can get through town. Of course, you'll notice, they're all, whoops, they're all following our little plow guy here, just where they belong, chief. To reach that end, we set up some goals for this plan, and we divide it by goals that we shoot for during the snow event, while it's actively snowing, and then goals for the period after it stops snowing, because it really changes our approach to it. So during a snow event, and really, you can think of this list as, depending on the severity of the storm... Ah, I got the wrong button, I just, there we go. Depending on the severity of the storm, we're starting up here, that's our number one priority. So when it's really snowing hard, we're trying to maintain two pass open lanes on primary streets. Again, that gets back to that emergency response issue. But as the snows are lighter or not as strong, we can start working our way down this list during the storm event. So, our top goal during, during the storm is to maintain two pass open lanes on primaries. Then we drop to one pass on the secondary and the minor streets. Secondary streets are generally your neighborhood streets, minor streets. They're certainly minor by name only, not by stature or who lives on them, but those are streets that don't have a high volume, don't connect other streets, generally cul-de-sacs and alleys, that type of thing. So, our fourth priority then is to provide access to village buildings. Once we have general, generally good streets throughout town for people to drive, then we'll start working on the buildings. And then you can see, we expand from there, two pass on secondary, full width on primary, full width on secondary. One idea that we've, we've discussed in the past, and I don't feel ready to implement this year, because of some driver challenges we have, is this, these last two. And it's maybe something you can think about as we get into the season, it's certainly something we can revisit. And, and maybe more so after the snow is over. We spend a lot of time, once things are slowing down, on primary routes, getting them curb to curb. And during that time, everybody's shoveling their driveways out on the neighborhood streets, then we come back and generally plow a lot of them shut. Now again, that's not something we can eliminate by any means, but we're gonna look at some different options this year, maybe try some different timing on, on these streets, try to minimize that. That's probably, as you can imagine, our, our top complaint that we get in public works throughout the year, is that, you know, it's hard work shoveling drives, everybody here knows that. So we're, we're gonna look at some methods to minimize that. So again, then we get to after the snow event, kind of the same format, but, so after the snow is done, and again, the same idea, this would be when it's, you know, snowed the heaviest, all the way down to very light snow, is we can complete all of these very quickly. But our top priority, once it stops snowing, is to get a minimum of one lane open on all streets. So, again, back in 2011, when we had the, I don't remember how many inches now, 14, 18 inches, our top goal, when, once it finally stopped, was to get one lane open, so people can get in and out of their properties. After that, we go to full width on primary, roadway access to public buildings and school sites. So, we wanna make sure people can get to those other facilities that they need to during their daily lives. Then we go to full width on secondary and minor streets. Finally, we get to pushing back snow piles from street corners, I'm sure you've all seen, as plows go around the corners, they tend to deposit quite a bit of snow right there. So, near the end of our operation during each event, we send guys out to, to push back the corners. Again, we wanna make sure there's plenty of visibility, that bus stops are as open as we can make them, that is sometimes challenging, some of the corners where kids are picked up, oftentimes, get a lot of snow on them, so. And then finally, complete snow removal at village building sites. So, those are our goals, how do we do that? Well, one thing is with materials, this is our salt order form. A little bit small print, but this year, we're getting salt from North American Salt Company. We talked a few months ago about the challenges that we had with the State of Illinois program, that's what we've historically used. But we were able to connect with North American Salt for 3,000 tons, is what they've committed to selling to us, at $103.23 per ton. You can see, I was looking at last year's, last year's was fun, I got to tell you, it was a $5 per ton price decrease. This year, again, as we've discussed, it's quite a large increase, 86%. We're not alone in that challenge, many communities across the state have been dealing with much higher salt prices. Some have been able to stay where they were last year because of the type of contracts that they had signed with CMS. We did not have a multi-year contract, we weren't offered that at the time. So, I think there's more discussion and maybe analysis of how the salt pricing got to the point it is today. We won't do that tonight, but I'm sure we'll be hearing more on that as we move forward. So, we're committed to buying 80% of that 3,000, so 2,400 tons is what we have to buy going into the season. That'll be our target, to just buy the minimum, again, because of the high price. We'll see what the salt supply and what price it bears come February, March, April. It may remain high all year, it may drop down if it's a light year, and there may be a lot of excess salt, but... We've set up a series of snow routes, these should all look familiar, these are, these are unchanged from last year, we haven't picked up any new streets, so I'll, I'll go through those. Again, there's a legend that's on our map, but generally, we have six street routes, we call them. They're divided by primary and secondary designation. So again, the primary routes are those that connect neighborhoods, they're major thoroughfares, they handle a high volume of traffic, they're significant for emergency response. Secondary designation are generally the neighborhood streets. Then we go down to minor routes, which again, no indication on anyone that lives there, but again, based on traffic volume and connectivity. And then we have municipal buildings. You can see from the legend, we identify our primary routes with a solid color, and then kind of a hashed symbol for the secondary route. So, I'll take you quickly through these routes, I'm just gonna hit the highlights of where they are. We've got the red route, which is generally, well, not generally, it is out west, mostly on the north side of Route 30, takes Fairfield Way and Foxmore, but we also come down into Lakewood Creek West. And we do come down Gordon Road, excuse me, just a convenient turnaround as we get south. Next would be our yellow route, that is also west on Route 30, but south of 30. Again, you can see Huntington Chase, Marbury, and Blackberry Crossing West are the primary subdivisions served by the yellow route. We then go into the purple route, it's a little bit different, it's more of an elongated route, it takes you basically to and from the Public Works Building. But it goes out to Blackberry Crossing, Montgomery Crossing, and Saratoga Springs. Continues again, Saratoga Springs, Cat Drive, comes up Baseline Road through some of the industrial areas, and then Albright, and heads back towards Public Works Building. Our orange route, this one is primarily Lakewood Creek, but also includes part of Orchard Prairie North, or all of Orchard Prairie North, excuse me, and Lake, some of Lakewood Creek West. We oftentimes include the police department on this route, depending how many drivers we have in. If we have extra drivers available, and it's a heavy enough storm, we'll bring in a separate driver just to do the building routes. That's not very common, I will say, we generally try to handle it with the six route drivers. We then go to our green route, this is more in the central, it covers the Orchard Road corridor. Now, we don't plow Orchard Road, but we have a number of streets, Cornell, Rochester, et cetera, that come off. Ockert Road corridor, down into Old Town, here's Village Hall, then goes up into the northern end of the Old Town area, up into Martin subdivision. And then it actually crosses the river bit, the river a little bit into Seasons Ridge subdivision, so. And we get into our blue route, which again, is east of the river. By the right button, Arbor Ridge subdivision, part of Seasons Ridge, Montgomery Road as it heads east, continues out Montgomery Road to Parkview and Marbury. Takes the Douglas Road corridor, and then Goodwin Drive, out on the very southeast corner of town. So, that is it for the routes, stem to stern, again, we have six routes. We vary our drivers depending on the storm, but a six-driver call-in is, is very typical, that's the most common. We occasionally bring in more, but again, we have to really look at the long-term forecast, we don't want it to deplete our driving hours. And occasionally, we'll bring in less, but we found, you know, for, for all but the smallest storms, that's just not very effective. It just takes us too long to drive those routes with fewer than six drivers, so. I mentioned the building routes, we've put together some priority zones on the buildings, this is Village Hall. You can see the, the dark purple areas are the highest priority, so that would be the employee and public parking area there, the horseshoe, so we can get access to the building. And then the sidewalks and walkways, and part of the parking in front of the building. So again, if we can't get to everything, those are the areas we're gonna concentrate on first. We then expand out, we clean the other parking lot again to provide more. And then finally, we get to sidewalks and Graze Way. That's actually, Graze Way is actually handled on the green route, so it gets plowed frequently, on a little different schedule than the buildings. Same with the police department, again, we've identified the front parking area and front doorway, so residents and anyone who needs police assistance can get in. The drive back to the Sallyport, and this is the back, I don't, not really an alleyway, Dan, the back drive, I guess, from the Sallyport divides the front and back part of the buildings. So again, that is our, our basic level, so during the heaviest storms, we wanna be able to get vehicles in and out of that property, and get people into the building. We then expand and do more of the parking area for staff and patrol vehicles, and then Civic Center and Griffin are handled as part of the orange route, so they're, they're not included on the building. So the list of our snow removal equipment, I won't read through them all, but we have an, an equipment numbering system. I've designated which ones are base, our primary units for plowing. They're generally the eight-yard single axle trucks, we've got the six-yard single axle, and a couple of tandem axle trucks, those do the, the brunt of the plowing, the larger trucks. We also have a couple of pickup trucks that we use, not as frequently, we try not to use those on the streets, just because their blades aren't as wide, they're not really built for long-term, heavy-duty use, although you see a lot of private contractors using them, they work fine. Excuse me, just not as effective. I've highlighted a few of them in kind of the aqua color. 242 is a new truck that was purchased, approved in the budget and purchased. It's replacing 251, which was moved out of the fleet. 243 is a new four-by-four pickup truck that's assigned to our Fleet Services, Alan Duncan uses that on a daily basis, but we also got that with the plow. That vehicle is replacing 201, which is, we've never used 201 as part of the snow plowing operations, but some of you have seen the budget presentations, will remember the 160,000 mile pickup truck with the hole in the floor, so, it's gone. Served us well. And then 343, also on the budget, was a Bobcat Skidsteer that has a snow pusher on it, that's replacing a new Holland Skidsteer that we've had for many years, that actually went through the flood. Survived barely, but it went through, and served us for a long, long time. So, just quickly, this is the, this isn't our Bobcat, I took this off their website, but that's what the Bobcat with the pusher box is. Here's a pretty typical, the GMC 2500. Our truck looks a little different than that, but those are the, the new vehicles. These are just some statistics I've been putting together for a number of years. I don't know if we can draw any great conclusions on them, other than the trending that we see happening. So, we're basically going back from 2000, when I started, up to this current year. We show lane miles across the top, that's no surprise, it's been going up and up, except for the last three years, we've leveled off. Our population likewise, up to our, our current level of 18,438. And then our plowing staff, these are a number of people that have CDL licenses and can drive plow trucks. So we've kind of hit a peak there, and then we drop back down, starting to work our way up, and actually, this year will be the largest number of licensed plow drivers that we've had available. So just looking at some of the numbers, and again, I, I take this more for trends, and this is just a, a graph of the table you just saw. Here's our number of plow drivers, and here are lane miles. So again, you can see, we held pretty steady on drivers, quite an increase in the late part of the, the 2000s, again, as expected, as we're building and growing, and kind of leveled off. And then this is one I, I use for reference, when I started in 2000, and again, what we've got here is, the burgundy bar is the village population per staff member. So, I should've probably used a burgundy box, but those aqua-colored boxes show the number of, if you take the number of residents that we have, and divide it by the number of drivers available, this is how many citizens that each driver has been responsible for serving. So it peaked at 2010, at just under 2,000, it's been working its way down, not because we're losing people, but we have been able to add a few, which has been good. We're really at about our 2,008 level, so if you remember how busy it was that year, that's about where we're back to, so, still pretty stretched, I will say. And then the top line is the extra, the lane miles per staff, so, and in this one, I do include the Boulder Hill population. We talk about village population and then service population, as you all know, there's... As you all know, there's another eight thousand or so residents in Boulder Hill subdivision. So, again, just as a way to measure a trend, we include them in there because, as you know, as the drivers are plowing, they have other duties that they have to complete, too. Juilli locates and customer service and water main breaks and all the other things that have to be done. So, again, not really surprised it's following that same shape of the curve, but we started out in two thousand at just under eight. Service population per employee peaked at sixteen, come back a little bit to twelve and a half. But, so, again, I think what I take from this is we've kind of gotten back to our two thousand eight level, which I think, I can tell you from our perspective in Public Works and I think some of the other departments, it was crazy. At that time, we thought this is really a heavy load. So, certainly thankful for the additional people and hope to continue that trend, to be honest with you. So, that's it for the data that I have. Again, that was kind of a summary of the plan, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The first one is for the chief. Excuse me. When a vehicle, at two inches, we begin to ticket vehicles. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is the fine if a vehicle is parked on the street after we get two inches of snow?
Twenty-five dollars. After seven days, it's fifty dollars.
And that's first offense, or is that additional offenses as well?
That's each occurrence. It doesn't increase.
And the reason I ask this question is because if we have people who are parking on the street and we're not doing effective snow removal, it's costing the village overtime to send a guy back out and do these roads again. Should the fine be more? Because if you're being hit with a twenty-five-dollar fine, oh, it's like the noise ordinance. I'm throwing a party. We'll just, whatever. We'll take a collection. But second, third, fourth offenses, if they're not getting it through their head, then maybe they need to be hitting the pocketbook a little bit more. So, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, we're spending the time, the taxpayers are spending the money to go back out and have Public Works go back out and do their street again when we get the callbacks, because finally, this person has moved their vehicle. The plow trucks are so big that they can't get right up against there. So, I mean, it's something that I think that we should at least discuss.
I have two clarifying questions related to that. Chief, and I don't know if you have this data. I'm not sure you would. Do we have a large problem with recurrence? Is it the same vehicles? Or does it usually bring somebody into compliance when they get the ticket? Do we see the same blue Chevy Cavalier sitting on the street day in, day out?
Yeah, that would be a tough call, but there are streets that, Main Street, Kimberly, that don't have driveways and they don't have garages. So, you know, we try to work with Public Works to get those cars moved so they can clear the street, because the ordinance calls from curb to curb. We surely can look into it this year to see who the offenders are that are...
Trustee Youngerman is saying is a valid point, but if it's not an issue where we're getting a lot of recurrence, then I'm not sure we need to spend a lot of energy on it. So, it would just be, it was more of a general question.
And my next question is, and Director Pobins and I have talked about this briefly. Trustee Bond and I spoke about it after the basin meeting. Would it be beneficial to do some kind of a public information-type thing? We had the big presentation on basins. This impacts every resident in town, and I think people don't get it. People don't get that your neighbor parks his car on the street, so now the plow goes around his car and leaves three feet of snow in front of my house. So, I'd tell my neighbor when I see him, "Get your car off the street," because I don't want to shovel the street in front of my house. If we could raise public awareness of some of these issues, we may not need to write the tickets. We may get better compliance, which I know is the ultimate goal, is to get people compliant. Mike has a great presentation. Would it be worthwhile to do some kind of an event to try to get people to come out and inform and educate the public a little bit more? You know, when I talk to Mike, I know my kids, they go crazy when they see the plow. They think it's the greatest thing in the world. He could do a presentation. We could schedule it for an evening here in Village Hall, and we could, he could bring a plow and park it out in front, and the kids could actually walk past it, because they don't ever get to see the plow up close. It's going past at thirty miles an hour. So, it was just a suggestion. Mike and I talked about it, and he agreed that it would be worthwhile to bring up for discussion this evening.
I don't agree with that. I've been around a long time, and the same people park in this street, whether they know it's snowing or not. And you was talking about Kimberly. They got a place to pull them around the side into that garage that's there without the doors on them. They're supposed to use that, but they don't use them. The best way to do that is put a ticket on it, call a truck, and let them tow it away and let them pay for the towing.
The six fifty through six fifty-eight have to park on the street, but I will definitely look into that when it starts to snow.
I would agree with having a presentation, but at some point, it's common sense that you pull your vehicle off the street after it snows. I mean, I don't, at some point, it's common sense. And if you, it's a twenty-five-dollar fine, it's a twenty-five-dollar fine, it's a twenty-five-dollar fine. We're just not getting it. If it's a twenty-five-dollar fine, a one-hundred-dollar fine, then a two-hundred-dollar fine, then it starts to hurt a little bit more. Or, better yet, we can work something out with the homeowner that hasn't, didn't move their vehicle off the street about them paying the overtime for the Public Works Department. At that point, then, they'd be happy to have a two-hundred-dollar fine.
And I would defer to Attorney Anderson, but I believe we could probably, after the third time, issue a long complaint and send it to court.
We certainly have that right. We've built into the code a provision for the compliance tickets, which is what you're talking about right now. Those are the voluntary payment systems. What'll happen is if somebody ignores that, then it automatically becomes a ticket that's issued and goes into the circuit clerk system and ultimately appears in front of a judge. Rather than actually redoing anything in the ordinances, one easy fix to what you're proposing, Trustee Youngerman, is that where either Public Works or PD is aware that we've got SCOFF laws, we would just stop issuing the compliance tickets and go straight to court with them. In other words, after the first one, they don't get a compliance ticket anymore. They get a court issue or a court citation issued. And then they can alert us, the prosecutors, that this is a SCOFF law, and then we'll know to increase the fines when it comes to court, and we'll get your problem taken care of.
And my goal is not to find and ticket. My goal is to have nice, clear streets the first, without spending thousands of dollars on overtime from Public Works. You know, that's not my goal to find into compliance, but if that's the way that they're going to be, there are certain people that just don't get it. And I think that's what you've got to do with a certain small percentage.
Do you, in fact, go back out? If the cars move, you go back out and replow those streets? How would you know that the cars moved?
Some of them we can pick up as we're doing our cleanup. Some of them, a lot of them, we get complaints from other residents who live on that street. So, I can't say we spend a lot of overtime doing that. It's not something that we would keep people in or call them in for, but it certainly extends the period that we spend plowing. It extends and increases the mileage on the trucks. You know, in a small way, solve the usage. Not a lot, but it certainly requires additional effort. I will say that.
It's a real good way to become unpopular with your neighborhood as well.
I would agree with the chief, I think. I couldn't tell you if they're individual repeat offenders, but there are certainly streets and types of streets throughout town that it's fairly common. A lot of the cul-de-sacs, mainly because they're narrow, makes it very difficult for us with any cars parked on there. But there are some other neighborhoods or blocks.
Yeah, Galleon Fox and Rebecca Circle and the places that have townhomes and condos, those become very, very hard to clean the street in.
I had a neighbor last year that actually parked two vehicles up in their lawn. They pulled them up into the grass, because they didn't have any more rooms for cars.
That's a good, that's a ticket right there.
But they have garages. I mean, clean out your garage. It's amazing what you can fit in your garage when you clean it out. I have a two-car garage, and I can fit two cars in it. Right?
I was just hoping they'd quote you on that. That'll probably make the highlight for the year.
No, but...
One comment that I was gonna say is, you know, the first pass-through, that's the safety pass, so the roads are clear. Anybody parking on the street, they're all residents. That's not going to inhibit, you know, clear passage of the street, so I don't see this being a huge safety concern more than a nuisance. But, again, these are all residents. These are all people who live in the village of Montgomery, and we want them to move their car, but we don't necessarily want to fine them to death doing it. Maybe, what I was thinking along the lines of a presentation, if we could do a resident, five bullet points, resident guide to the winter months in the next, I know we have the newsletter going out, five things for them to remember, trying not to park on the street, this and that. I don't know, I would like to think we would get good attendance if we held some type of event. Maybe that's something staff can talk about, but I don't know. And we do bring the plows out for Montgomery Fest and other events for the touch truck and that, so I think.
We didn't do touch truck this year, I don't believe.
No, we didn't.
If we're gonna have some sort of program or some sort of, something that goes out, these five bullet points, I'd also like to add that once you're good enough to move your vehicle from the street into your driveway, don't park across the sidewalk. It just causes kids to have to go out there, and then we have the potential of children being run over by vehicles. So, don't block the sidewalk as well.
I will say, I was kind of trying to get at this. Everybody being Montgomery residents, they really don't want to see us hammer down on residents who might not have another option where they're parking their car. They parked their car to go inside to attend to their family or go to, you know, go to work and that kind of thing. While it is a nuisance, it's probably not earth-shattering, in my opinion. And that's today. I mean, when it snows and my neighbor parks on his grass, I might disagree, but...
I figured it was better to park in his grass than it was to put it on the street and have everybody complain about the plow, so. And sometimes, I mean, there's some houses, let's face it, in these economic times, I have people in my neighborhood that have four and five vehicles. During the winter months, they have no choice but to block the sidewalk. If their car is gonna be off the street, they're gonna block the sidewalk. You know, I think they try to avoid it, but they're gonna block it. They have to make a choice between being on the street and being across the sidewalk.
Once again, a garage is a wonderful invention.
I know you're joking, but there are some people who don't have garages. I think we need to think globally about it. I will end on a positive note on this. Almost ninety-five percent of the comments I ever get about our snow plowing is that it's excellent. It's better than the neighboring communities. It's better than what the county does and the state does. So, I don't want to see us make any drastic changes to the plans moving forward. I think you guys do a stellar job every year, and I appreciate the work that you and your guys do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll share that with our group.
I mirror that. I do get positive feedback about the snow removal in our neighborhood.
You know, we don't get positive feedback about too many things to be serious and, but I do. I get calls for the quality of snow removal that we do, so. If there are any other comments on that, we can direct them to Director Pobins. Thank you.
Debbie just confirmed we can still get something in the newsletter, so we'll work on putting together a bullet point of, please consider this this winter.
Things and don'ts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And move on to item C for discussion, which is the revisions to the liquor license classes. And with that, I'll ask Attorney Anderson to go through both of these.
Thank you. After the last few meetings where we've been discussing the potential of adding another restaurant license, the question had been raised by a number of trustees whether or not there was anything that we could do relative to the gaming aspect that necessarily comes along with a liquor license. And my initial reaction was there would probably be very little that we can do because we don't regulate the gaming license. That's done exclusively by the state. You don't have a lot of latitude there. If you grant a liquor license, the state has carte blanche to issue a liquor or a gaming license if they see fit. So, my initial reaction, like I said, was that there'd be very little that we could do. But then Mayor Brawley actually came up with a creative solution to that, which was to point out that we, in fact, regularly tie the liquor license to the other sales that occur within the building. In other words, the restaurant license. We say, yes, you can have a liquor license, but the amount of liquor sales has to equal or exceed, reverse that, the amount of food sales has to equal or exceed the amount of liquor sales. You know, the fifty-fifty rule for restaurant licenses. So, the thought was, well, couldn't we tie that to some extent to gaming? And I took a look at the statute again, and this hasn't been done anywhere yet because the statute is so new that I think these things are being still vetted, and we'll see, you know, what ultimately comes. But I thought, you know what? This is a reasonable approach to this. And so, the idea here, and I think we still need to tweak these categories and the way we've done it, but the idea is to have two categories of liquor license for restaurants. One is restaurant, and that would be your typical fifty-fifty. And the other is restaurant with limited gaming. And here's the distinction between the two. For the first of those, which is your restaurant liquor license, what we would say is the fifty-fifty rule applies as follows. Fifty percent of the revenues relate to liquor. Fifty percent relates to liquor. The other fifty percent can be anything else. In other words, gaming, food, T-shirts, ashtrays, souvenirs, you name it, whatever. So, what that would mean is that the liquor license sales would predominate. The other way would be the exact opposite, where we instead say that the food must be fifty percent, and everything else is in the other fifty percent. In other words, the gaming and the liquor together can't comprise more than fifty percent. Naturally, then, what happens is the amount of gaming has to be limited because typically the sales of liquor and gaming might normally be quite a bit higher, but in this case, it's gonna lock them in. And the result is the state can give them whatever license they want, but when they come up for renewal the next year, if they haven't met your fifty-fifty rule, then they're not entitled to keep their liquor license. So, that was our thought for a solution. Mayor Brawley, like I said, fair credit, he was the one who came up with the idea. We've drafted it, but Jeff and I have been kind of going back and forth on it, and we think there's some tweaking that we want to do. We don't need to get into the weeds on the details on that yet, but if you're okay with the concept, I think that's what we try to bring back to you, is an additional class, which is restaurants with limited gaming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments?
Question. What latitude, let's say I had the traditional restaurant and liquor license agreement, and I decide that I want to add gaming. Do I need to come back and apply again, or what's the process for that?
Currently, you don't. If you have a liquor license, like the restaurant license, you just need to go to the state. And, in fact, I'm sure that's actually happened. I would suspect there are a number of businesses that did exactly that. So, our current G license is more expansive. This new license that you would create would be more limited. And, of course, remember, you have, I don't know however many the letter P is, number of liquor licenses that differentiate and have different requirements. So, as a legislative body, you have the right to enact different classes. So, someone can't say, well, they have a G license and I only have a P. That's perfectly acceptable. That's a legislative function that this board can do.
I'm very supportive of the concept, then.
And at the next license renewal, they would then have to switch, either remove the gaming or switch to a P.
No, they wouldn't have to switch.
Anybody who currently has a G would stay with a G. It'd be new ones that you were issuing.
Right. We're not talking about, we're talking about creating two different classifications. One is a more expansive license. One is a more expansive license, the current G, and then a more limited license, the P. So you'd have your option. And that's not to say that in the future, you couldn't grant more Ps or more Gs, as the case may be. That's up to you as a body.
So they can get a G, which is 50-50, food and liquor?
They can't get anything right now. You have, all the Gs are taken. Remember, that's how we structure this, is that you always have a full-up list of licenses. There are never any openings.
Unless we create another one.
Unless you create a new one. And that's where you have then the discretion to create different classifications with different rights.
I think you and I talked about this. The, what authority do we have to modify the G? So we have G licenses out at five, six, or seven restaurants. Gary O's I know is one, because I know they have the video gaming as well. Do we have the authority to modify the G license, knowing that they currently hold the license?
Yes, you do. And we did talk a bit about this. The metaphor I would use is that of the closing hours. You know, right now, your closing hours are, what, two? One and two. If you said all of a sudden, we want closing hours to be 12 and 1, you have every right to do that. You've affected the, everyone's operating hours, but you have the right to make that sort of a change. So yes, you can change the existing licenses.
One thing that brought this up, and by the way, I appreciate the credit, but if something happens and we end up in a lawsuit, I had nothing to do with it.
Then it was all on me.
He put this necklace right around your neck. I just did have one question. We have very limited control over gaming. We can either allow it or not allow it in town. So once somebody gets a liquor license, they can do the gaming. And I think this board or the past board, I think it was this board when the VFW came, agreed with that, that we would allow this in town. But this is one facet. You know, the two gentlemen over there made the comment that we don't want, that they don't want gambling halls in Montgomery. And I actually do agree with them on that. I spoke in favor of granting the new G license. My intent really would be food. We want, I want restaurants on the west side of town, but I don't necessarily want gambling halls on the west side of town. And I've spoken with a number of residents who seem to agree with that as well. So that's the thought behind this. I would actually like to see these flipped so that we have our G is modified, so that its food is 50, and the liquor and gaming is, you know, basically everything else, so that our restaurants are restaurants that also have gaming, not gambling halls that happen to serve food.
So if the direction of the board is to proceed, we can go ahead and work on modifying these.
One more follow-on comment. And that's the distinction between packaged goods sales and by the drink sales. We have, as I'm aware, a packaged goods store that also is operating gaming equipment, and that didn't seem consistent with our thinking on this topic either.
For some reason, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know this off the top of my head, I thought that the gaming license had to be issued for a place that served.
Well, that was my thought too, but we do have at least one in town that's packaged goods.
Well, the state is the one who issues the gaming license, so maybe my understanding of that is incorrect. I can get back to you on that. I can verify that.
It might signal the need for yet another classification, or it may be a situation that should be addressed.
Okay. We'll look into that. I don't know the answer. And when I say me, I mean Laura.
Let's just be clear. Thank you, Laura.
I got a quick question, and it wasn't made clear last time we talked about it. What do we do to verify it's 50-50? I mean, it was kind of, it's kind of a generalized comment. Here I see it's state liquor reports. Do we do food bills against, I mean, what do we do here? Because definitely, you can make a lot more on liquor than you can on food. So you're going to buy less liquor than food. But how can you know it's 50-50? I guess that's my...
They turn in a form that they certify is accurate, and then we have the right to go ask for more detailed information if we have concerns or questions.
And we never have.
Not generally. I've asked Justin this year to bring back to you, when we get the renewals coming, to bring to you the information that's submitted to us so that you can see what the businesses turn in. So we'll provide that to you when they come for the renewal.
I think it's in the draft ordinance too, and that may or may not be exactly what's currently in there, but it's pretty specific, a decent number of documents that we have the right to request to verify that.
Do the liquor licenses follow the calendar year, or are they renewing throughout the year? So they would all come up in December?
All right, if there's no other comments, we'll move forward in that manner and look for this at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Moving on, is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
Yes, I have two items, please. The first item is a point of clarification. We had a resident from Blackberry Crossing come in and talk about some concerns with speeding, and we talked about doing some type of outreach program. I just wanted to clarify because I really felt like it was implied that that was only happening on the west side, which we very clearly have a problem throughout the community. Specifically, Montgomery Road, we have speeding, Briar Cliff Road, Seasons Ridge, even with the construction, we're having speeding. And I will also tell you on Briar Cliff and Seasons Ridge, with the construction, people are passing each other, which I was shocked to see it in the construction zone. I didn't think there was enough room to do it, but they're doing it. So we have problems throughout the village. I just wanted to make sure we weren't specifying that it was in one area. Further on that item, we have, once the committee gets going, whatever you figure out you're doing, I do have a resident who is interested in working on that, and he also provided some great ideas at the last mayor on the move. So once you all get yourself going, I'll be glad to forward that information to you. The other item for the chief, were you getting these through Seasons Ridge over the weekend? So I brought this in for you to take a look, and will you please handle that for me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
That's for your rock garden.
Yeah, I know you love to see the rocks.
I'd like to comment on the speeding issue. I'm reluctant to call it a speeding issue because all the studies that we've ever done probably would say that it's not a speeding issue, but more so people driving faster than people are comfortable. But yes, the vision would be is that those would be staff-led, public meetings that all of us could attend, that any resident could attend, and be more of a discussion on an outreach program. So that we can, because we get this, we've gotten this constantly since I've been involved here on Mayfield, Blackberry. My mom complained to me, and staff went out there, and there was no speeding. So at any rate, we'll look to do that.
And they did the program on my own street because I was getting complaints from my neighbors. And on the curve there, it seems like they're taking it too fast, but they were going 30. I think they found one person speeding. And I talked with one of the patrol officers who was working with the sign and stuff, and we figured out it's a perception problem. They weren't speeding, but they just felt like they were going too fast for a residential area.
What is our speed limit in town? And, you know, is it 25? Is it 30 on non-posted streets?
A non-posted street is by law 30 miles per hour. We do have streets that are listed at 25, but we post them.
And do we have the authority to lower the speed limit in town uniformly in residential areas? I didn't think that...
Well, I will, I would ask Pete to comment. We just discussed that issue.
I think we have the 25, we can take the speed limit at 25 miles an hour. However, there's some issues relative to the amount of signage you have to put in for enforcement because you can't, I have to double-check this, but there's limits of how, we'd almost have to have speed limit signs on every street in order to actually ticket people. So it's a question of whether or not we want to go down that route. We can look into it further, but that's as low as we can go, is 25 miles an hour.
Okay.
The streets that we've designated 25, we've done by speed study so that they're defensible in court.
And would this have to be defensible also?
Well, we can do, I think, the, I think the statute allows for a citywide speed limit of 25, but where I'm not as clear as on enforcement, I don't know if Attorney Anderson recalls, but I think there's some limitations in the amount of distance between signs that you can actually, if you issue a ticket.
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
If you could let us research that a little bit.
All right.
Jump on that, Laura.
Thank you, Denny.
Laura, have you met Pete? Do we have anything else that needs to come before the board?
I'm not even going to mention last night's game.
Thank you.
Thank you. There wasn't a game last night, Denny.
Right, I know.
Not a game. What game?
Thank you.
I could mention Saturday night's game too, then.
Can we please move on?
All right, future meetings, you can see in there, Historic Preservation, on the 17th, we will have the committee of the whole meeting on the 18th next week. And then you can see the other two meetings there. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation, which is filed and pending pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C11, and also to discuss the employment of employee pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C1.
And also threaten an imminent litigation, which is the same C11.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
I carry 6-0. Thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
I'm adjourned. Thank you.